...twenty, we would ask if you would stand please for the pleasurable evening. To the very beginning.
... Angelique.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And what time is it, Heather?
So...
Four to eight.
Yep, four to eight.
Four to eight.
Four to eight. However, it's really gonna be a little longer. So, we will start setting up apparatus probably about ten o'clock in the morning, 'cause it takes a little while. The cool part is, in this case, they can set up right there, not have to worry about things blowing off and this and that. They don't have to change the wiring in their trucks like we usually do, 'cause we can have generators for power. And then what I'm thinking about doing is reaching out to all of those with special needs in the community. So, Maplewood, Baywind, Cherry Ridge, some of the group homes that we have, and say, "From three to four, we'll let you guys come in specially." And the reason is, we will make sure none of the lights are flashing, because sometimes lights can cause problems. So, we'll make sure there's no sirens and no lights during that one hour period. It'll be open only to those invited organizations. But, we know everybody wants to and should enjoy a holiday parade, so we wanna open it up to everybody. So, three to four will be special needs, and, you know, people that have limited mobility and things like that. Four to eight will be the actual event, and then, you know, eight to nine will break it down and everyone will go home and hopefully will have a successful evening.
That reminds me of James Park and at the Holiday of Lights where you just drive through the fifth.
Yep, yep. That was it. Now, you know, one of the theories that we had was to make Toyota drive one way and put all the apparatus on one side and people come down the other. And the reason I think that was so interesting was, you don't get to have the spirit of community. You don't get to see, "Hey Jake, driving the other lane," and people don't see that, "Holy cow, there's 2,000 cars here." You just kinda get to see someone's taillights and someone's headlights. I thought if we did it serpentine-ing through the parade route, you get to see everybody, the lights are flashing, there's music. We're gonna invite some of the church groups to carol in the upper parking lot, because I'm sure people are wanting to do something and haven't been able to. Webster School's marching band director said today, "The school is not allowing them to do that," so we'll open it up to carollers and other groups.
Well, according to the JNC, might be something you should look at. You, but I know they've been...
Sure.
But that would...
Yeah, so we can reach out. But, so we have a meeting tonight at eight o'clock. We are kicking it off with fourteen department heads, you know, Webster PD, us, the fire department, just so I can have some help doing this. And then we're gonna just rock with it. We'll send out some press next week to let people know, and, you know, I hope you guys will join.
Sounds really good.
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions, anything I can answer?
Good idea.
Oh, I think tomorrow. And, um, Jake, what about you, the round from the village, obviously, you'd have to talk to...
Just making sure, the bid last, I think it was Friday, sorry, last Friday or even maybe it was this Monday, I talked to the bid president who was talking about doing lights on main screen on the buildings. So, I don't know, it sounds like you had talked to the bid...
Yes, and that was the big district on, what day is it, Thursday, Tuesday morning. They also wanted to do something separately. They were asking the fire department to decorate the building. The reality is, it's not the fire department's job, you know, the ability is, there's risk for that. It's not our job to decorate private... However, the bid said, "Well, what we'll do is, we'll flip this around. We're gonna print like a program with all the business improvement district businesses in it and hand that out with coupons and other things." I mean, the goal is, we are not charging anybody, right? Xerox has given us the space for free, MyTime is free, I do that a lot these days. But, the concept is, we want the community to kinda get fired up and back together again. So, you know, if people wanna hand out coupons, if the guy that runs the vacuum store wants to say, "Come get your vacuum service to get the needle help," whatever it is they wanna do, they do whatever they want, right? We're gonna set some rules, we're gonna define tonight. You know, only so many people per space, you don't have forty people and violate the rule backwards. You know, no handing out food, right? If you hand out anything, you gotta be gloved and masked, you know, one per car. So, we'll define all those rules over the next few days, but I think that's easy to manage. You know, I think, yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I like that, that's a good idea.
So, if you're Andy, Mayor Byard, I emailed you the concept. I don't have everyone else's email, so if you could just...
Okay, yes, so you do have it all, so you...
I'll disseminate that to everybody.
Yeah, so if you could circulate that around. And then, who would be the right person from the village to just kinda be the point of contact? Should I keep in touch with you?
Uh, you can, and I will try and pass it on if we may change this stuff.
Okay, yeah, so just keep an eye on the emails. And what we'll do is, if you would like a space, we'll make sure you've got something somewhere to greet people as you go by, and then you can put some signage up that says, you know, "Village Board" or whatever it is and greet people. I think, I don't know, I just think it's kinda a neat idea. Something different.
Very nice.
Oh, yeah. Or two, right?
That's it.
You probably have a truck or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, kind of.
And I would suggest sashes to the village board.
You guys figure out whatever you want to do. You wanna come as a bridge, you can come as a bridge. No Santa Claus, that's the other thing. So, the rule will be, I think that used to be Webster Fire Department's parade rule, was you couldn't have Santa, 'cause we don't want kids getting confused. So, the bridge may appear, but there won't be, the rule will be no Santa Claus.
Good.
Right Jake, I think that, that's all...
Yeah, and so you, yeah, so there is, the real guy shows up.
Yes.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Any other thoughts or suggestions?
No, I get, and, uh, you can obviously work on the inventory correction.
Did you revisit the whole food part of it?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I really don't know what the food truck rules are, because two food trucks approached and said, "Could we set up a pride con?" I don't know. I don't, I, you know, conceptually, I don't want anyone getting another car, right? That's our way of protecting the community, but, you know, the food truck's set up somewhere else? So, I said, "I don't know." And I've sent an email off to the, there's a food truck association in Rochester. He said, "What are your rules?" Because I saw tonight the, at the Mexican restaurant on the west side, what is it called?
Montielban.
Montielban.
Yeah.
There's a, the Bay Vista Takiara truck is out in their parking lot. So, I don't know how, I don't know how it works, but I also don't wanna create a monstrous traffic jam right now. All of a sudden, people are stopping to eat and this and that, it becomes, I don't want this to turn into a bad...
I just think they're driving around there, they would rather just have that driving around, nobody's getting out and...
Yeah, I would get it.
But that's really...
I like that.
Yeah, I think keeping it simple this year. And what I'm hoping, you know, tonight I hope to ask for Webster's invite list for the parades. I mean, other fire departments, we've done no parades all summer, right? And when I ask, I belong to West Webster, you know, when I ask the parade chairman there, he's like, "Holy crap, we'll do it." I mean, he went to the commission, I guess, and then the association, and they're like, "Yes," because we like to do these. This is, A, it impacts our fund drive, right? People forget about us and that we're out there, but we also like to engage. I was a fire prevention and community relations officer for ten years in that fire department. It's kinda goofy not doing any of that. You know, we miss fire prevention week, all of that stuff. So, I think it's a great opportunity to kinda reengage with everybody.
Yeah, my dad was a fireman at West Webster so many, many years ago, so, yeah. We used to have an awful lot of fun.
Yep, still do. So, thank you for...
Good idea.
Thank you for a few minutes of time, and I'll keep you in the loop. Bye. Night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night. Good night. Good night. It's a good idea. It's really hard not having any, anything going on.
Yeah, well, we were even trying, in the neighborhood, trying to figure out what we can do for Halloween for the kids, and of course, I got my, you know, being rich, there I am. I've got my cauldron and my, you know, three... And I said, "We'll just put it out on the sidewalk." You know, and we can sit on the porch, but at least we have something.
Yeah, imagine doing that same thing for Halloween, using Xerox. Like, we, year, we could've probably pulled it off, having pre-diag candy, rolls on masks, we could've flood cars drove through, great idea.
Well, but I think this is good, and you have, and you have all these information, so if somebody asks me some questions...
I have nothing. He sent it to Daryl.
Daryl hears it off.
He sent the information on the meeting, but not information each other. So, that'll become, they planned it out tonight, I think.
Yeah.
And the date, they'll flush it all out, people that can raise it, that'll come up tomorrow.
Yeah, we need to get as much as we can, 'cause I know people will be asking thousands of questions. And it'd be really nice to have this, that would be super. The world needs it right now.
Did you receive anything, Heather? I did not receive a telephone message either, so at this point, then we will move on. And we'll let you all know as the information comes into me. All right, we'll move then to go to business, and the first item is the approval of the minutes for October eighth. Have a chance to let those over. If there are no questions or comments, then I would ask for a motion to go through.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have our claims in the morning. I had an opportunity to look through, and there were a couple of questions that I had. First, I guess it would be, what is a Barbara Green, a ten-ton roller?
It's a roller for when we're paving.
And is that a loan or a lease, or at least that's an ownership?
No, 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 that's just, we borrowed it or we used it for that day, or they, they brought it with them. That's the, oh, sorry. That's probably the first thing on the invoice. Which number, it's gonna be for road tech?
Yeah, that's twelve, twelve and five thousand dollars for one day, that's pretty high tech.
Yeah, that's, that's only the first line of the invoice. It was a roller, the paver, the operator, the screed man, all that, you know, this must just be the, you know, one line of the, one line.
Right. And a question in that, that was a roll of that.
Yep, no, that does seem like a lot for a...
It's a big, uh, it's a big roller.
What's LaBella doing with the sandbar wells now? Do you know?
Yeah, they're helping to prepare the documents, you know, for the engineering report to go out to bid.
Okay, that's...
For doing the, doing the decommissioning of the wells down there, working with them on the grant and everything.
Okay.
On our behalf of the seeker, you know, they're, they're helping provide information, 'cause we're doing one seeker on a joint project and that. And this is, yeah, this has gotta be the other, the engineering stuff. We also just did a PO and did the agreement, if you recall, a couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, I think, for the environmental engineering, go through and check for asbestos and any hazardous materials before the buildings come down. What's this charge? Well, I know what it's for, but I didn't get this in something. Bar, like Ronnie Bar bought for a pair of brake links, balanced two tires for over four hundred dollars. Again, I think that's gonna be on a GG one? Ten eighteen? Yeah, W six. That's the sewer van. Yeah, brake links balanced, there's New York State inspection. There was something, oh, it's the tires itself too. The tires, right, I think were a hundred and thirty bucks a piece.
Oh, alright.
So, yeah, those are in there, again, it's, not everything fits. Oh, okay. That's just for those little things, I'm like, "That's so pricey." Yeah? Okay.
You guys are on top of things. Jake, which pump station? Right on the first page. Remove twelve trees to protect the pump station.
Oh, that's down, um, was that the, yes, that's down on Ashwood Circle. Oddly enough, there was ash trees on Ashwood Circle, and there was, and they were not ones that were treated. In fact, some of them weren't even, you know, within the, within our, on our tree inventory, they were within our right-of-way, not really in our inventory. Some of them, there was one that was on the other side of the fence, but it was dead, standing there, and we, they get real brittle when they're there, and we didn't want them wiping out there. So, we set them top it, so it couldn't fall over onto our pump station or the fence. So, and that's not all twelve of them, they weren't. That was part of it, there was other ones, and we had two, two or three down Reynolds Row, too, there was ash trees down there. We, I think it was a hundred and twenty-four ash trees in our inventory, our tree inventory, we went through. We treated about seventy, sixty-eight to seventy of them. When we went through and evaluated them and looked at which ones had good structure, were in good health, frankly, that were worth saving or worth treating. There's some right along Pontiac Drive that they're, you know, from, this is obviously has to be six feet. So, they're six feet apart, they're, they're, they're very close, they were planted too close together. So, we treated, I think, every other one of those, I'd have to look back at their records. And then there's other ones that were, they said, that didn't have great health, and they weren't in great position, not great structure. So, we said, "All right, if, if they get it, they're gonna get it." But, we put our, we put, we invested in the ones that were really worth saving, and these were not.
And the fifth from Ash Tree Forest?
Yes, yep, yeah, that's, that's, a few years back, I remember, we were talking about it, at that time, they were saying, "It's not if we get the Emerald Ash Forest here, it's when," and it's certainly, certainly here.
One other question today, what are the LED bulbs from Brown Electric for two oh seven?
That's, that was for the U-shaped LED bulbs that were up in the front office. It's, they have those U-shaped fluorescent ones, they're kind of an odd ones. We got those, we actually have thirty-two more coming on their back order, and there's also, I don't wanna say grant, but there's a rebate through Nice, is it Nicerta? Argenti, some, one of those things. We knew we had, they were coming soon, we were looking for, we, we used all the lights that we had, the U-shaped fluorescent ones. I said, "All right, now it's time to," or I didn't say it, I guess, Clancy's been keeping track of it, doing a great job, and said, "Hey," he saw they, found a rebate, I think it was four, four or five dollars a bulb. So, it's about thirty percent of the cost, or thirty, thirty-three percent, and so he's, uh, he's got that coming, if we get the bulbs quick.
Anything else? If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make it. I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next we have an authorization to sign a lease purchase agreement for a wheel loader. I wish that there was a picture in here. Can you explain to us what a wheel loader is, Jake?
Will asked me for a picture, and I actually sent one to Will, but I should've sent one to everybody. Wheel loader's a big piece of wood, we cleared the snow with the parking lot wind, and we use it for, you know, loading trucks and things like that as well. If you go to any mall or shopping center, you know...
Or a parade every year?
Yes, or after, after Thanksgiving or the beginning of November, you're gonna see them in the parking lot there. There's their big, huge machines with the, with the snow plow in front of them. The one that we have now is a nineteen ninety-four cat. We went and looked at three different, we have four different approaches to it, I guess, three different, um, machines. Ultimately, the, excuse me, we have a case, and that case was the better, the best deal. Went over this with Marcha. We have money in the fifty-one, forty-two, two-hundred lines, which is the snow. This is a planned purchase. We also had planned on three additional vehicles, and those are not happening until we find out later on, you know, what the third quarter sales tax is doing. We don't have those figures yet, but this would be one of those important things, and she suggested, we looked at lessening the year-over-year cost by going to five-year lease, and we reviewed it, and when she suggested the four, it saves about seven thousand a year. Well, it doesn't, ultimately, the cost is only about twenty-eight hundred dollars difference, or twenty, twenty-five to twenty-eight, I don't recall exactly, but it's about seven thousand dollars cheaper every year to spread it out. You pay a little bit more, but you spread it out and not have the impact. But, she had a great point that if we save that seven thousand and don't spend it, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be enough, I mean, seven grand's a lot, but it's not gonna be enough to add up to another vehicle or another spot. So, it's gonna get something that's lost in the translation probably, and she thought it's better just to, hey, hit it for four years and get it done. So, again, as a lease purchase, we had, um, different companies look at the lease, uh, plan itself. The one for, that Monroe Tractor provided for that case, six-twenty-one, was originally, I think, three-point-two-four percent, and it might be still represented on here. No, it was three-point-six, but, no, it was adjusted. I, we questioned that and said, "Hey, what about, you know, that three-point-six is a little," or three-point-three-six was a little more than we'd been getting from other places. And so, the gentleman from Monroe went and got another place and came back at two-point-nine, so that's pretty, pretty favorable. Milton, can I just get the stuff this afternoon altogether, and that's about with the modification that's required for, or to operate the plow on that. I have it in here, it's one fifty-six, seven, no, excuse me, one fifty-six, eight-fourteen, and they didn't provide all the information, so the Monroe Tractor case is the, is the recommendation.
So, is that similar to the one that was used last year out here in the parking lot?
Yeah, only it's...
Is it replacing it?
Yes, yep, and then we would put that one to auction, either a, I think, honestly, I think probably in November, well, as soon as we could get the other one in, we would put that one in the next net auction, online auction, and I think would do fairly well.
Do you have a, I know what you think?
But we'd get for it. I just went to the auction, you know, up in the airport, the October live auction that they had. There, honestly, there was no random reason to what things were going. I would hope that we'd get about ten, ten to fifteen. Might be surprised, it's, uh, it's an older machine, and it's, it's got a few hours on it, and it's, you know, it's obviously evaporating the salt and not the best conditions, and it's, it doesn't know it's anything. But, we got our money's worth out of it, but it is, I would, I would hope, hey, ten to twelve, hopefully.
Okay. Good enough.
Uh, Jake, is this the total price for that, or is this a, do you plan on a four-year lease?
Well, that was, the four-year lease was...
That needs to buy, I suppose.
Yep.
And what's the initial purchase amount?
It was one dollar, one dollar at the end, I think that says it in the lease.
Purchase option is one dollar?
I think at the end, yep, that's paying for the entire lease. Yep, purchase option, one dollar. So, this would be option two, and this is paying ahead. I'm trying to think, 'cause there's one, the difference, one of them you pay in arrears...
You're paying for, yes, seven years versus five years, isn't that on there?
Yeah, and one of them is you pay in arrears, and one of them you pay, yeah, the option one is paying at the end of the year, and this, the other option two with the four-year, that's what Marcha recommended, that's paying, once we sign that contract and get delivery, we're, the first ones do. So, it's not, you know, we don't get it, you know, twelve months, same as cash kind of thing, really buying a couch, you know? That's not what they have, they had some of those things. Yeah, then they unload all the interest. Yeah, and you can see, even see it there, that four-year, um, annual payment is about a thousand dollar, eleven hundred dollars more for paying at the end of the year rather than the front side of it. And it fits in our garage.
I'll be informed.
Your garage? Our, our...
Our garage, no, yeah, Jake's gonna give it to us. That's a good idea. She probably do that. So, white wouldn't get to shovel all the snow along the driveway. She would miss that, I'm sure.
I would assume you reviewed this, Don? I don't see any, it's pretty basic, right?
I don't think this is, is this the actual, I don't think this is the actual lease. This is just a proposal.
So, this is just accepting of the proposal?
Yeah. It's not the real lease. If that's what you're asking. So we're looking just for authorization.
Right, to, to, to sign this?
For the four-year.
So you're accepting the proposal, and then Don would review this?
For the four-year.
Yeah, the set option two.
Option two. Any other questions? Then I will entertain a, a motion or authorization to sign the lease purchase agreement for the wheel loader.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Buckhane?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have a discussion on the Village Access Way through NEQ, which is only with that northeast quadrant.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Has nothing to do with-
No, yeah, this was, yeah, nothing to do with, with the map or the ambulance there. This is, this got called back, I remember when Dave Gallego was there, and they were looking at a big parking lot there, and it was a northeast quadrant parking lot, so I just kind of stopped. But yeah, this is basically behind the music store, behind Smith's and the music store. We have an easement over that access way into there. Shortly after Smith's, it becomes ours, you know, at the line of the, what used to be the old Bowman project, or the Hebaum project there. And we own, I always call it like the F with a scarf. You know, if you look at the map, it's, it's a letter, capital F, and it's got a little scarf, little tail there. That's what we have through there. The scarf part of it's pretty dark. That's on the, on the western end. And this is a, one of the pre-COVID things. John from the music store asked me quite a while ago, we met down there, we talked, and then COVID, and then I've been talking to R G E, and finally was able a couple, about a week and a half ago, to meet the R G E guy down there, went over, and there was an existing light that might have been put up. It's relatively new for security during the construction, but it's big. It was like a 450 watt bulb. So we want to reduce that one, that area light down to about 250. And then on the opposite side, there's an existing pole, had 150 watt one there. I reached out to Mr. DeVosson, almost 27 north that, there were the Bee, was it the Beehive, the North Bee? I forgot the name of it right now, it just escapes me. But 27 north that next building there, just in case there's an apartment upstairs, I wanted to communicate with them first, and hey, we're doing it. They were very appreciative and looking forward to it, to get more light down there, I think, you know, for security reasons too. So it sounds like everybody's on board. And if you guys are, it's about, total about $40, $43 a month for those two lights. It's consistent, we just get adding on to our regular street light bill.
Are you looking at the standard light fixture on the second page that we had?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking at, putting up?
Yes, yep.
And would that be at the standard height of, or what?
Eight foot.
What, what height would that be at?
No, those are, those are probably 25, 30 feet up on the pole.
Why does it say eight feet? It does say eight feet here.
Oh, the bracket, eight-foot bracket off of the, the arms, eight-foot off of the pole. And the, the bottom, he's got some notes. He's going to put a Cobra head, there's one, cutoff fixtures. They plan on using cutoff fixtures, better project the light down to the road. That's going to limit the light spread, kind of direct it down a little bit. Hey, here's where we want it to keep it on that access road more than spreading way out and having people-
It's really needed down there, though. It is.
Yeah, it's a pretty dark area.
It's been like that. We talked about it a long time ago.
Yeah, well, and trying to get the, you know, make sure-
I know.
Get people lined up there and so forth.
That is quite easy back in the moment, Jake.
Yeah.
Jake, are both poles within the easement? Very good question. I don't have that map that you emailed us, but one of them looks like it's in Smith's, the one without the fixture on it now, is in Smith's parking lot. And it's outside the easement. I think you got to get their permission to put a light on here.
Let me, uh-
The old one, I think, is within, might be within the easement, the one that's closer, where you went to talk to the Beehive person. That one might be within the easement. But if they're not within the easement, you got to get the property owner's permission to do the work for one thing, you know? You're not, the village doesn't have a right to put up these lights. If it's not within-
What are code enforcement there and all that?
No, that's a great point. I didn't, I was thinking of it as an R G E thing, that R G E had easement there because there's existing poles. But you're correct, why I think, because the lights are, it's for distribution, not for lighting, probably, so.
Well, right. And I have no clue, you know, if there's a pole without a light on there, so even if R G E had an easement, if they abandoned easement, or there's no light on it, how long has the light been gone?
Oh, no, this is still, it still has distribu, it still has service wires on it, still being used, but not, but no, I'll, that's a great point. I'll ask, ask those, and even if we, I don't know, would you do that through an easement, or would you put a letter of understanding with them, or?
I would just, if you talk to them, and they say it's okay, send them an email just confirming the conversation, so you have something written down-
Okay.
That says they approved it, you know?
All right. Oh, great point. Yeah, so, thank you. Can we put this on for next meeting then? And I'll have that done before then.
Jake, I have a question for you. Looking at the area, where are the two lights situated? If I look at the area of-
If you look at the Village Bakery, on the west end of the Village Bakery, near where the dumpsters are-
Yep.
I guess where the 450 watt one is now that they want to reduce to 250, I think, because it's not directly over the access road, but it would illuminate there, which is why I think he wants to keep it a little bigger than the other one, that's a 150, that would go on that eight-foot bracket and be out over, you know, onto the, over the access road a little more directly, so.
So the second one would be down closer to the babbitt?
Yep, west of there, and it's on the south side of the access road. In that, there's a pole in between, I want to say it's Smith's parking lot and the old dentist office there, in the, between those two parking lots. Right in there.
All right, well, I would, then probably suggest that we hold that, and you check to see that that is, and that easement or not.
Yeah, no, I hate to put them up just to be told to take them down, so it's a great point.
Yeah, I can't imagine whoever, that no one's going to complain about the one where there are, is an existing 400 watt light, and you're going to reduce it by, you know, there's already light there, so. It's just the one where there is no light, and now you're going to put a light on it.
Yeah. No, that's a great point, so I'll get that squared away.
Very good point. I ruled that down, down. That was the second one this year.
Oh, that was good.
So it's down too, with the rest of the zero?
That's where they've been going.
All right, so, so look forward to that next time. Uh, next, we have a discussion on the 28th Central Street invoices and J K Morgan Chase claim. Who would like to address that because of-
It's just an update, really. We got a check, we got a check the other day for the full amount, the $1,800 that was owed to Seneca.
Was the back, taxes or?
No, that was the property maintenance.
And maintenance.
Yeah, it was one there, because weeds were about six foot tall in the backyard, and we had to rent equipment to get back there, so we, you know, actually, next Monday was supposed to be a court date for small claims court. I got to remember to add that to my to-do list, to cancel it, I guess. I'll do that.
I'll remind you.
You should get, get Jake a point for-
Yes, I think that'd be done.
Eighteen hundred dollars, but, you know, they scared a lot, and they just came up with a-
You're on the board.
All right. Um, I think I have field number two coming up here, too. We had that auction-
Oh, yeah.
No, excuse me. It didn't go out right there. The auction in October, um, at the airport, and I'm just going to keep talking until everybody starts laughing. And we sold, if you remember, we had our sewer snake. A painter, our old, uh, small dump truck, and a, our sidewalk, probably the old trackless altogether. We got $21,275 for that equipment at the auction. Trackless got a little less than I thought it was going to go for. And it was, again, that's the one we did the business district with, that we have the salter on. It was, it was a little tough. That one only got about $4,500. But our old pickup, or excuse me, our, our small dump truck there, W15, if you remember, W15, it was a Kodiak, you know, 4,500 dump truck. And that got $16,000. So I was very, very pleasantly surprised. Like I said, altogether, I think we ended up probably a couple grand more than I thought we were going to get for all that equipment. So with the Wildcat Turner, was just on the last net auction, did not get a bid. The opening bid, we didn't set. I went and still talked to the auction guy. They set that at about $5,000. I certainly think that's worth it. It's got a big diesel motor on there, it's relatively new. But I think it's just, you know, we got to look at the marketing. No one wants a composter. No one, no one needs one except for, we used to. But I think there's a lot of people with equipment that use that kind of, that diesel motor that's in there, and a diesel engine that's in there. So they could, I think, maybe we can market it that, hey, there's a diesel engine for sale, it's in the Wildcat, come and get it. And then we can scrap the Wildcat, if nobody wants that part of it because, or figure out how to dispose of that. I think there are true value in that's in the, in the engine, that's a really nice, real nice engine, so. But, and that's it.
Very good.
So what was the total amount that we ended up with?
$21,275.
It's tied with Don now, very good.
Jake, could you tell me what the first amount was, I was reading this before the trackless?
Oh, the trackless was 4,500.
And was there one before that?
Uh, the W15, uh, was 16,000.
Okay.
The snake, the sewer snake, the camera, our sewer lateral camera, that was $700. And the painter, that's striped line painter, apparently was not too pretty, it got $75.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you. And we'll see where we go with the company.
All right, we move now to attorney.
I do not have anything to report.
Nothing to report, all quiet. And we'll move to the code enforcement. By the way, Will, thank you for your work in Village Hall and the new water heater that was installed in there. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to have hot water.
Put in a water? Said you guys were going to ask me, did you get a permit?
I cannot answer that question.
I was threatened to keep this short, so I'll keep this short, because apparently we have a debate to watch later.
Very nice.
It should be very exciting. All I want to do is highlight just a couple of things. So new businesses, we're going to have a new dance studio, I think where the old Strupps was, 32 East Main, Rock City. I think they came from over yonder.
That's what it used to be?
Well, it used to be, well, Strupps, right?
Well, no, before Strupps, before the last Champagne Yarn was there, was a dance studio. That's what their ramp was for.
Oh, yes. The new name for the restaurant over at the old Webster Auto Park was there-
Yep.
Uh, it's going to be Cobblestone on West Main, it's called.
And it's just a, what type?
The restaurant? Oh, what type of restaurant, or?
Yeah.
Oh.
Up 235 or something?
Down, you know, probably along that caliber. Down below, they have a smaller area that they're probably going to use for small parties and things like that, because we don't have that in our area. I think I mentioned that last one. I did meet the owner, a great guy. He was from the area, moved to Chicago for a while, ran a restaurant out there, and decided to move back and invest in the village. And so-
What was that home name?
Cobblestone.
Cobblestone, West?
I talked to him too. He was really, really nice. He wants to come and meet the village. He was really excited to be back in Wester, so it was really nice to talk to him.
I can't hear you. Did you speak into the microphone?
It was really nice to talk to him. He said he's really excited to be back in Wester. Because we gave him his-
Oh, well, that one's on you.
I think it will.
Well, if the building was packed with stuff finding stuff, he was hoping to open, and I mean conservatively, not conservatively, aggressively by Thanksgiving, but I don't see that happening. That building needed a lot of work, a lot of updates, especially converting it from what it was to a restaurant. But they did have a really good company, you know, working on it, and good crew, really easy to work with. And they're just doing a great job over there. And of course, with Greg owning it, you know, Greg Tambry.
Oh, my gosh.
So.
Very good. Thank you, Will.
Okay.
Got right down to the nuts and bolts?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, can't hear you. Thank you.
I do have a question. The certificates of occupancy, over Phillips, have all of those apartments or townhouses, whatever you call it, applied for occupancy? And are they now currently occupied? And if so, my question ultimately is, are we or have we collected-
Parks and Rec.
Pardon?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Yes. So all the, all the buildings that have CMOs, we have the Parks and Rec fee. We're all caught up for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Will. Any more?
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm going to leave wine and stuff.
Well, Rick, is that for that for you?
He's Doug, he already told us earlier.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
We're picking up leaves, and we started this week doing our leaf pickups, just wanted to remind everybody, keep them in the grass, not in the gutter, not in the road, on the other side of the curb. We, yeah, we'll, we'll get to them as close to the edge as you can get, and we'll get them. But if you put them in the gutters and curb lines on everything floods, and your neighbors are really bad at shit, and it doesn't go well. So hopefully, the, we got all the rain out of the way for leaf season, and we'll have dry leaves up here on forward, but I don't, I don't know about that. So that's it. And sewer, everything's flowing well. We had a visit today from the, Rick from the town, he's the operator, that's a, I guess a temporary operator or whatever now at the town. He did a walk through down their plant, they had been there, so he wanted to see how things were going, and kind of did an inspection, so know what's going on. Bob took him around, John was there, but he was busy, you know, one of our primary tanks doing a regular maintenance activity on that, but he was down in the tank, and he was, he was quite, quite dirty, so we let him get working on that and going from there.
Uh, Jake, I do have a question. I guess it's probably a little late, but it's just come to mind. Back in, I guess, it was in 100 drills for 100 and- Back in, I guess it was in 100 drills for $101,000 for the canyon pipeline inspection on Phillips. Can you address that since you're with sewer?
Yep, yeah, sorry, that was, thank you for bringing that up. That was the, basically from Orchard Street to Chiota, excuse me, about halfway, about the center of the parking lot at Xerox. You know, the two half round parking lots from that area up to Chiota or Mitchell Dean. There was a relining of that section of the sewer main. When Xerox did study their sewers, were looking at, that portion was the village's and all the rest of them on campus right now are private ones. They did an evaluation of the sewers that they have. One of the things they're looking to do is stop in some what they call INI, so infiltration, where you're basically getting groundwater leaking into the pipes. So, and that puts, you know, extra, extra cost associated with it because you're measuring that amount of water that's going through. It's basically rainwater, it doesn't need to be treated. We don't want to treat water that doesn't need to be treated. So they were working at doing that. When they, when they were doing their study, they actually did our section of our pipe too and they identified a couple of spots where there's some cracks and there were some issues. So we scheduled to have that done. After, we put it into the budget, you guys approved it, so we scheduled to have that done. It was something that was on state or county bid. But in the meantime, we also, we had a community development block grant, CDVG-CV, which was a special community development block grant they did during this pandemic thing. And this is a project they wanted to spur the economy, spur some things going. So we applied for that. It was a very quick turnaround. They told us about it, we had to have a thing of like three or four days later, five or something like that. And then they, within five days, they let us know whether we got it or not. So I had the $101,000 the village had through the monitor county plan and the development. They managed the program for us. We got $67,410, I think it was, for that project. So it was really, we were able to leverage that grant and get a lot of work done for relatively low cost to our, to our sewer users there.
I just had something quick I think we need to gather together. Remember that we were going to do a workshop to talk about some employee policies and then I think adding to that mix, maybe some of the policies around elected officials, meaning this board and interactions from our families to employees. I think that needs to be discussed.
We did talk about it.
Workshop?
Yeah. So particularly meaning that, you know, say my wife, I don't think it would be appropriate to be calling to, you know, to scream out at a local employee, I don't think that would be appropriate. And then the other one, we, we've talked about the other one, so I think we just have to talk about that.
So the November 1st Tuesday, November?
That's election day.
That's election day.
So did you want to?
The following.
Because the following one will have a Thursday meeting, but.
That's fine, we can, whenever the next one will be after that, it's not like desperate, but we just, we shouldn't leave it. I mean, we talked about why it was important to do, so just don't want to lose something that-
Or we can schedule it for the last Tuesday?
So which?
Why don't you look and send a email to everybody?
Do you think it's any coincidence that the town has scheduled a drug turn in on the same day as the voting is taking place at the Red Center? Did you see that?
I did.
That, kind of unusual, so now you got the voters and you have the drug turners, the drug returners and the people that are working out, same day, same time.
Well, then, Phillips, you were not taking any longer than you could take, is that what you're talking about?
No. Yeah, I think he's just bringing the point of that you're adding a lot of people to the same place at the same time.
There's people using the facility, there's people returning drugs and voters, you know, I'm saying.
I just-
Just as a matter of conversation.
Why don't you do that the same day?
What your drug turning was.
Turn in your drug that you're not using.
You may need them just for this year's election. Hold on to those. I could see this.
Taking their platform?
And I just, yeah, I just gave everybody some of the phone. To just clarify the island. But we met Tuesday night, we went through everything to, just so everybody take a read. Don didn't get one, but Missy has.
I didn't know.
I didn't get one.
I didn't know.
What is it?
It's on, it's on the other struck island. It's historic preservation mission. Something that we had public hearing on back in October 2019. And I just wanted to reiterate what we had done.
Very good.
More about that?
I do have a question. The material list that's there and who is, who bears the cost of that?
This dark preservation is, that is coming out of our budget. That's what we budgeted for this year. The trees are, Jake's getting the Japanese lilac trees to replace the ones that were run over and that's insurance money. So then it's just the plantings for vouchers that will be taken. So that was our project and we didn't ask you guys to.
Do you want to move your microwave, or my microwave holder?
What?
She wants you to go to your microwave, I'm not sure what that means.
You're scaring me, Heather.
Maybe you should drop here.
Yeah, so why do we have to be like on top of these things?
Because they're noise cancelling ones, so if you're outdoors, I think so, they might be any more direct.
You need to have, okay.
I want to get a headset like that on.
All right, we have-
I love you, Jake.
Item here, public notification. A serial bond interest in principal payment for bond obtained in 2012 will be made in the amount of $49,887.50 on November 14, 2020. We've encompassed three things and-
Can I get two signatures on that, please?
Pardon?
Can I get two?
She needs you to sign it twice.
Thank you. Two signatures, please. Well, two trustees.
All right, at this time, we'll open the phone lines again, one more time, if anybody wishes to call in. I would announce that the next village board meeting is November 12, 2020, here in the boardroom. And I don't have anything more than that.
Right before that, is there Veterans Day the day before? If we want to remind everyone what the plans are for that day?
Yes. Believe that we will be, it should be in the paper, maybe it had it better in the paper. But we will be hosting a drive-through for veterans and their spouses. We will be serving a lunch to go after the ceremony. If you would like to drive through back by the fire hall, back just down here off the steps of Village Hall, we will be handing out, I'd call it a dinner, I guess, but it is a luncheon, normal Veterans Day luncheon. So if you would like to partake of that, we would look forward to serving you. I don't see anybody calling in, so in that case, if anybody else says anything?
We have a public hearing.
Pardon?
Public hearing next meeting.
There is a public hearing next meeting, that is correct. Okay, now for motion to adjourn leave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carry. Thank you for watching, good evening.